Yeah, right. Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's right, Fab.
You, you ready?
Whenever you are.
There you go. Good afternoon. This time we're gonna call it Edgfield County Planning Commission, West Session for September the twelfth, twenty twenty-four to order. Yeah, ordering that, so no guess, big old business, no old business, new business. New business review and discussion on proposed preferred tree and plant list for landscaping requirements and planted buffers. Discuss change of subdivisions, must use include landscaping entryway requirements and buffers. Discuss proposed change to the buffer and screening requirements of large scale retail in the county highway overlay district. Indeed, to discuss the possible implementation of a tree requirement and all required green space.
Okay, okay, if you don't mind, Fab, just before, so I don't forget, I went ahead and first of all, I apologize for the late packet. Still don't understand what happened. I use groups. I've used the same groups for over a year now, never had this problem. All the inde- independent emails that I, individuals I tagged in the thing, they've received it, but my groups did not, they were empty. So I apologize for people who planned to be here for a regular scheduled meeting or whatever, or didn't get the packet. But the, tonight, we're just gonna discuss everything and the meet, and the major decisions will happen at the, you know, next few meetings. So really not gonna miss a whole lot other than, uh...
It was on the website, you know, it was very...
Yeah, I know, and I, but I hate it, you know, some people plan to be here, like, you know, 'cause I, a part of that group is the citizen group that are tagged in that, they get the information, and I just hate if anybody thought that there would be a meeting tonight. It was canceled on the webs, on our website, but they, they're used to getting those notifications. So if you guys ever don't get them, the Thursday before by five o'clock, something is wrong. So ask me, call me on it, let me know, and I'll, we'll get it fixed then, rather, you know, so everybody has a time to go over everything. Um, Platts and submitted for August is in front of you. Um, you've got four plat reviews, uh, three minor subdivisions, one major subdivision was Windsor PD five, Phase Five. That's already preapproval on that one, and an exempt subdivision was one. So that was what happened in August as far as subdivision submittals.
What exempted that subdivision?
It was over five acres and didn't create a road. Any, by state law, anything that is over five acres and does not create a new road is an exempt subdivision. And less than, uh, in our ordinances, it would be an exempt subdivision, um, well, it wouldn't be a major subdivision until you go five acres or more, or you sub, you subdivide more than five parcels. All right, first on your agenda is your, the tree, and this is not the tree preservation list, this would be a little much. We have, um, developers, commercial builders and things like that, when they come in and they're, uh, to the point to where they have to do the required buffers or their landscaping, they come and say, "Do you have a list?" Most counties have a preferred planning list, it's just things that are good for the environment around here, like, on here, you'll see on the last page that prohibited trees, one of them's a Bradford pear tree. That is because, um, they sterilize, or they hinder the growth of our peach trees. So they do a lot, they do do environmental damage, so anything in that category as far as that's not good, we wanna make sure those are prohibited, and they have a list that they can choose for, from, that are, uh, that grow well and that are native species, that will do well here and thrive here, so in six months down the road after they're planting them and they're gone and they're not worried about it, they're not dying, they don't die come the winter time. So they thrive here, they, they're good for this area, so that's what that list is for. I am going to have, I'm in the process of having an, a horticulture agent actually look at that list and see if they have any suggestions, well, you, you don't do this because you're too far inland for this tree or this, uh, ground cover. It won't thrive because y'all do have a little bit cooler winters than on the coastal areas, um, or anything, suggestions of what they may wanna add.
Are you calling Ted Stevens?
Mm-mm, I don't, it's not Ted Stevens, I, I, I actually, I reached out to Clemson Extension and I'm hoping to get some, a help from...
Because Ted Stevens that, uh, owned Nurseries Carolina, which he's retired now, and well, they, they do wholesale but not retail anymore. He actually writes most of that material for Clemson.
Okay.
And he writes tests, and so, yeah, he's, he's actually an international expert.
And, I mean, I'll just tell Derek how to get in touch with him.
I can get you in touch with him.
I could too, if you can't find him.
Yeah, I mean, that would be great, because I, I'm not an expert at that.
Yeah.
And I, what I did was I just took several counties and, um, a lot of this come from, like, the Charleston area, North Augusta, Aiken County, Lexington County, and kinda combined it. And I would love to hear feedback from somebody who, who really knows, and like I said, some of the things I did get from Charleston may not thrive real well here. Um, and we definitely, the whole point of this is to have tr, things that are complimentary, they thrive well here, they grow well here, um, and they don't cause, you know, any issues with our existing, yes, so...
I can get in touch with Ted.
Yeah, that would be, that would be great, and, you know, it is rather, it's a, I mean, I guess you can look at it too ways, it, I mean, it's kind of a long list, but it did, does give a variety, I mean, some, uh, during some times of the year, they may, can get a hold of one type of, uh, species of tree better than another, or they might can get it wholesale at a better price. Um, I didn't know if you wanted to condense the list or just leave it like it was, once we get somebody who knows what they're talking about to look at it and say, "Yeah, that looks good to me." Um, how are you? So, um...
I'm, it's pretty comprehensive, there's enough of each.
Yeah, I mean, and I just didn't, I included that list just to give them something to choose from.
The ones that say non-native, is that, are the ones that are native, is that for Edgfield County or this, this area?
Non, non-native means, on this list means that they aren't typically native, they don't grow here naturally, but they will thrive here. They've been proven to thrive here. Um, so I, and I think everything on here should be in that, you know, thrive well here or is native here. So if, if y'all are good with that, we'll, we'll just get in touch with somebody, get a thumbs up, and then, um, within the next couple of meetings, we can at least vote on it, this is a simple, easy peasy, this is just a list for them to choose from. Now, we will get into the tree preservation, which is rather a lot shorter list in just a minute. Haven't prepared that yet, but I can give you an idea, it's... Eight or ten, and they're considered trophy trees, so we'll get into that in just a minute. Y'all have any questions about the list, compliment, I mean, uh, comments, concerns, things you wanna...
Um, I, I mean, I really would like, like, I'd like to hear from Ted, because he lives here in the area and he's, he's an expert on it.
Mm-hmm.
And he's, he's right in our backyard.
Yeah, and most of this probably came from him or one of his colleagues, because I, this entire list came from either North Augusta, Charleston, Aiken, or Lexington, so it, I would venture to say, I'd be shocked, other than, so maybe some of the ones that did come from Charleston, and maybe not so much here, but, uh, it should be pretty spot on, I hope, but you can't, you can always, just to be on, you know, do our due diligence, I would really like somebody just to glance over it.
And these trees and all will be used, like, here for the landscaping for ra, uh, like, large retail product, uh, projects?
Anything that we...
You still have to pass that, right?
Yes, anything that we require landscaping on or buffer yards, like, if they, if they don't have a natural buffer that they're using and we require, the ordinance requires them to have a, a type of buffer, and they have to fill in the blanks, like, the Freely Lake Corn Chip, they had nothing, they had to replant because they didn't have enough natural buffer, they would go to that list and they would actually pick and choose from those trees, bushes, and ground cover. So we would be specific and we can say, "Yep, we've got a list now," instead of just, you know, whatever you think.
I text his sister-in-law and asked for his information.
Okay. So if y'all are good with that, we'll go on to, um, and this is where I'm gonna want your, we're looking at getting your feedback, um... The landscaping requirements for subdivisions. On, I left you a copy of, uh, pictures of an example of possible entryway requirements to subdivision, they can choose either or. Um, that could just be some required landscaping for subdivisions, and we can extend, uh, you know, along the corridors, possible implementing for sub, for subdivision requirements, maybe some buffer requirements. So there are vegetative, uh, little vegetative screening between the road corridors and the actual subdivision and the entryways. The intro, entryway landscaping in those pictures, they not only include whatever we, we include in that list as far as you have to have so many trees, so many bushes, and so much ca, ground cover, it will also include irrigation, um... Irrigation and mulching and have a maintenance, like our, it will go along with what we currently have as far as the maintenance on landscaping. Um, but it will also, my idea behind it was to ha, um, require them to have signage that is lit for subdivision. That way, when people going down the road, they're trying to find the subdivision, they have a certain, like, if they have a monument sign or whatever kinda type of sign for their subdivision, it softly lit, and, and, and everything's landscaped at that entryway and along the roadways, the corridors, to any, where, whether it's in a, um, or, in a corridor the, that we have now, the corridor, Highway Overlay District, or it's in, anywhere in the county that you apply for a subdivision, that you have those, those light buffers or a light, um, in the landscaping entryway.
Are these identification signs, is there something now that, that tells you how big and tall and...
Yes, we would, well, we can, we can either leave the signage, which most subdivisions wouldn't go crazy, they're not gonna put a billboard for their subdivision. Um, you can write in, in the ordinance that requires a cer, certain type of sign, whether it needs to be a monument sign or it's, uh, like a pedestal sign or what type of sign, but our, um, most, I think, in the application for the landscaping design, that will be a part of it, we can write that in there, you need to show us what type of sign you're gonna use, and it's required to be lit. Your landscaping's required to be irrigated and, uh, mulched and all these things, and we'll come up with a list, write it up, and that would just be a part of what they, um, present to you guys with their application and their site plan.
Whatever it is, it has to go along with this type of landscaping.
Yes, it'll, there'll be, I mean, they can have, we can make it to where it's, they can choose from, uh, you know, certain types. I mean, of course, we're not gonna, if they don't have a bush in a certain place, we're not gonna go nuts over something like that, but just the amount, okay, you're required to have, uh, one understory tree on either side, you're required to have so many, uh, bushes and so many, so much, uh, ground cover, and you're required to have mulching around your, uh, around your signage. And just something simple, but at, at least there will be a little bit of landscaping around those entryway signs, and those entryways will be lit into those neighborhoods, I think that would be, I know people, some people like aesthetically pleasing and some people don't like the word aesthetically pleasing, but I think that would make it aesthetically pleasing. People will be able to see their entryway signs, and I think that would just look nice.
I, I don't have a problem with that, I just don't want to be so specific with the sign that we don't see creativity and differences between subdivisions, even in style of sign, like, like, like you said, either monument or pedestal or...
Yeah, I don't, I don't foresee anyone with, that's developing a subdivision doing anything tacky. I think they're gonna be pretty much the same, you know?
Yeah, I just, well, I don't wanna get to where we dictate that they all have to be monuments, you know, or...
No, they, we can simply go by our, our regular signing, that, you know, as far as they have to be breakaway for safety.
Yeah.
Or they have to be, you know, other than that, they would just submit in their application and their landscaping design the type of sign.
Yeah.
And just tell us, and it has to be lit, we don't care what it loo, you know, make it look however you wanna look at the, look, have it look like, but then have your required landscaping around it.
Yeah, I just don't wanna stifle creativity.
A ton of money when they don't have to, so...
Right, and we don't wanna make it just, this is so ridiculous.
No, right.
We just wanna make, you know, something simple, a few trees, a little bit of landscaping, and lit entryways as far as the signage, call it a day. Let's see.
So this, um, twenty-four nine ordinance in our packet where it says large retail projects, you're saying this is the same that you would use for subdivisions?
Um...
Because I don't have anything in my book that says subdivisions.
Pulled that out of there. Yes, this is existing, this isn't just in our, this is the Highway Overlay District.
Okay.
For the landscaping requirements, um, for a large, it's specific to large-scale retail. And the, last month I was talking to you about, along the corridor or along the roadways of these large-scale retails, it's required to have cons, a continuous total screening around it, and I, and you can, it, it's, you can read it there. That's a little much, because if, we do need a grocery store and things like that, we don't, I mean, you're gonna wanna see the grocery store, you're gonna, you know, people, let people know it's there, and I don't wanna deter, you know, a company that looks at our ordinances and says, "This is ridiculous, I'm not putting this here," you know, we can come up with, I just need a suggestion as far as, do we want to have a buffer along the road corridors, or could we just simply implement landscaping requirements? And I think that's in the highway, it replace what's said here about a continuous screening with a simple landscaping requirement. And of course, they can look at our preferred tree and planning list, and then we could come up with, uh, you know, the entryway designs, like I showed you last time, uh, with the parking lot, uh, the little green spaces in the parking lot and the entryways with the landscaping on either side, or...
In the event the tree dies?
They are required to replace it.
For how long?
For all of eternity, yes. As long as they, they're establishing a business there, that business, whether it changes hands and the ordinances will be required to provide the irrigation and replacement. Yep, the maintenance and the replacement of the tree.
I would rather just have the landscaping not...
Along the front?
Yeah.
So would you like, like, as far as, like, we had, um, I think what is in front of the Frito-Lay is a Type Two buffer, so we could write it like that, so for every hundred feet, there's a w, one large tree, a small tree, um, and so many bushes, we can write something that's simple where you get a clear vision, plus you're gonna, you gotta realize they're gonna wanna, they're advertising sign, they're gonna want it at a, you know, we can make concessions for, once you place that there, you can do some landscaping around it and, and have a clear view of your sign from, coming from either direction, so we have to, I'll have to look at that and kinda word it, but, you know, it would just simply be a light bu, uh, light, um, landscaping in front of...
Yeah, they don't need to be hidden right there on Hilton Head.
Right, yes, there, sometimes it's difficult to see through there, I love Hilton Head, but it's, they're difficult to see if, i, i, if you don't catch the sign. So we don't wanna make it like that.
Until after you pass it.
Right.
Like KJ's, theirs is nicely done, it's...
Yes, and, and we would just make that a landscaping requirement and come up with what that looks like, and instead of, we, we would just replace it, the, what is in yellow.
Yeah.
Okay. And that was, that's just as simple as that one was, um... And the last one was the green space. Now, in the corridors and, and just, we, we do require in the Highway Overlay District, um, certain uses to have a certain percent of open space. I would like to not only re, change that to require in those, whatever percentage that is, whatever that looks like for that particular use, to have trees implemented, and I would like to do, I would, you know, like to do that with subdivisions as well, 'cause subdivisions may have a green space or a green space requirement, I would like for us, them to have one going forward. You're, you're required to have a, a certain amount of green space, but in that green space, you need to have a certain amount of trees, not just an open field that's cut and it looks bare, um, implement a few tree requirements, you, like, for every acre, you have to have so many trees. Or in that green space, if you, if you're required to have five acres of green space, ten acres of green space, you have to have so many trees within that green space.
And we've already excluded utility right-of-ways and retention and detention ponds from green space?
Retention can be included, detention is, because retention, you can make a pond in a sitting area, it's usable. Detention, it fills up, lets out, we, and we're required to fence, they're required to fence it, but, so it's, it's ba, about useless. So that is not required, detention is not, um, they cannot include that in their green space.
So they can't count that area as green space?
Detention, that's correct, that's correct.
Okay, what's the purpose of having to have the trees? Like, if the, if the property owners have their own, you know, have the trees that were put there?
No, I'm not, I'm talking about green space, like, common area.
I didn't finish my comment there. If you have a green space that's just totally green space and that's it, that can be attractive as well, you know, if it's grass. I mean, I would, only, you know, if you required it to just be grass and it be maintained, blah, 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 that can be just as beautiful as, you know...
And if y'all don't wanna mess with that, that's fine.
Or you could just say a percentage of the area.
I mean, and it can, and I would not require a lot.
Yeah.
A few. That was just a thought, because it, at, looking at some that I've seen, it just looks barren, you know? Because some of them in the yards, they have maybe one tree and everything...
That's not in the green space though, that's in the property owner's space, right?
The property owner's space, a lot of them that I've seen, they may have one tree in the front yard, a little small sapling, and of course, it will mature and it'll look better, but in, you know, when you look at the overall neighborhood, if you have large spaces, it ju, it just looks kinda barren, but that's, that's a, it was just a suggestion, if y'all just wanna leave that alone and let green space be either or, or whatever they come up with there's...
It's maintained green space.
Yes, it would have to be either, either way, if it, if it's just an open field of green grass, it has to be maintained. And then, like I said, you could either not do that, or not require any tree or vegetation in green space, or you could, if you did, you would have to say, you know, they're, of course, they're responsible for if it, if it falls.
Yeah.
Or the limbs fall, they have, you know?
Throw it by life.
Mm-hmm, so that's just, that was an idea, you, we can let that die there, or we can pursue it.
I personally just think that the, like, rolling green hills are very attractive, you know?
How often, how often are these subdivi, uh, subdivisions gonna have rolling hills and such as that, very seldom.
Well, this is in the green space.
That's what I'm talking about, I mean...
But they're gonna have the, the green grass that...
Well, that's what she's talking about, you'll have green grass, but put some trees in there and make it a little attractive, or, than just green grass.
Yeah, it was just my opinion, that's all.
Well, yeah.
It's just an idea, I mean, we can, we can think about it, uh, see what it looks like, or we can just come back to it later or not just squash it.
Well, I think it compromises to say maybe, you know, ten percent or twenty percent of the green space will be occupied by planted trees, and they could do it on the edge, uh, of, you know, if they wanted open fields, they could plant trees along the edge, just to create some shade for people to enjoy that green field.
Yeah, we can do that, or we can, um, we can get, when we get into the tree preservation, they can use, utilize that space for tree preservation. Um, we just kinda need to get...
Yeah.
Decide what that, for y'all, what that looks like, and if we wanna move on it and just require subdivisions to have tree preservation, that may, instead of doing the requirement in the green space, the tree preservation will take its place, I mean, that may...
That needs to be...
Accomplish the goal.
Yeah, I think tree preservation needs to be throughout the development, not just green space. So I'd hate to see a developer go, "Oh, you're requiring trees, well, I'm just gonna plant them all over here in the green space and not disperse them, and that way I meet my tree preservation requirement and my green space requirement, and I'm, I'm just setting this much land aside and I don't have to worry about the rest of the, I don't, you know, I don't want them going through some type of loophole to do that."
Right.
And I think tree preservation needs to be throughout the entire development subdivision.
Yeah, it would be, it would, uh, it would, it would be, a tree preservation would be, I mean, if they have a certain type of trophy tree, that's tw, uh, uh, twenty-five inches, called a grand tree, of a certain type, it, they, they need to leave it, and it has to be marked. If not, they have to replace twenty-five inches of tree throughout the, but I see what you're saying as far as clustering them all together and I'm done.
Right.
Uh, but, you know, and, and I do understand that not everybody likes trees in their yard, they don't want the maintenance, and they don't want the fear of it falling on their house, I get that, but, you know, if, if we wanna kinda back off the, uh, requirement for the green space, we can, I think the tree preservation would help, would, uh, help a lot with that, and I think we would get towards a goal of making it look more natural in subdivisions if we do have that tree preservation.
Well, and those ordinances are for the developer, right, so once the homeowner purchased that house and they don't want that tree, they can remove it.
Yeah, that, to me, I don't think we wanna go into...
No, I mean, that's just, that's the way it's been explained to me, 'cause I've had, you know, buyers in those subdivisions, and they're like, "We don't like that tree, or we don't want that tree."
I wouldn't recommend it.
And, and the building, building superintendent told us, well, and this was in the city of North Augusta, by ordinance, we have to put the tree in, but once you purchase the house, you can do what you want to.
Right.
So I would think our ordinances would be written in the same manner.
Yes, less green space.
Yeah.
So it has to be, be maintained, they can cut it down in their...
Talking about trees in the, on the lot of the house.
They can, in, on their lot, if that's what they wanna do, absolutely.
Yeah.
Uh, in the green space, they have to maintain it.
Talking about green space, yeah.
Yes.
Talking about the lot of the house that's being sold, that buyer can decide whether or not they're gonna keep that tree, even if we require the developer to put it in. Yeah, green space is a different, that's, that's a diff, that would be a different part of the ordinance.
Right, yes, it would, it would be. So we can, uh, write that green space, I mean, the tree preservation ordinance, and like I said, it, that tree, we'll, we'll, I'll bring that and present that, give you an idea what that's gonna look like next month, and you can, uh, we need to see how in-depth we're going to go with this, I think it needs to be a smaller list, it needs to be, instead of these, uh, grand trees or understory trees, it needs to be a, considered a trophy tree, um, and that list is much smaller, the diameter, uh, is, you know, it's much larger. It's the DBH of, um, it's four, at four and a half feet, the diameter of the tree is about twenty-five inches around. And those would be preserved.
Um, last month, you said you were gonna send us some sample ordinances from other counties to read through? Did you send those out, 'cause I'd never received it?
No, what I did was, um, changed our ordinance, and I used different county ordinances for the tree, um, pr, uh, preferred tree list. Um, I can send, I can find snippets from other counties as far as trees preservation, a lot of them are really, really long, so, um... Once I got an idea of what we're looking for, I can kinda condense it and show you, well, this is what Lexington County does, this is what North Augusta does, and this is what Aiken County does as far as tree preservation. So, um...
And I, we're gonna get sample ordinances on the, the banning of the mass grading, I thought we were gonna get those too?
We're gonna sit down and, uh, Doc and I, and probably some other, uh, another person, one or two other people... We're gonna sit down and, uh, Doc and I and probably some other, uh, another person, one or two other people. Uh, are gonna sit down and have some discussions on how that's gonna work. Because mass, just saying there's no more mass grading. Um, that's going to be, uh, a little bit more difficult for developers. And I think maybe unreasonable as opposed to, um, tier grading. They would grade, they would grade it a tier and then do another tier. And with tier grading, you keep the natural topography of the land. And then you wouldn't have this mass grading where everything's flat in a neighborhood. You have the nat- if it's rolling hills, you have natural rolling hills. And you would, uh, you keep the, what is natural beauty of that parcel of land the way it is. And you just design your subdivision around that tiered grading. If they're, you know, if it's a flatter piece of land, then fine, you know? You go through it and you, you grade it how you need to, but they would need to design, they would in the initial steps. Of their engineering, of their plans, their site plans. Knowing that ahead of time that they, they can tier grade, they can actually, when they turn their tree preservation lists. If those are, they, they turn in that, uh, not tree preservation, their tree survey. If they mark them and show these are the ones that we have to keep, we can design the neighborhood around this. And, or this is how we're gonna design it and we'll do that tier grading. And it, it'll just, it'll look a little bit different on how they present everything. But it will keep the natural flow of the land itself. And that's something we'll have to, I'm gonna get some more expert opinions on how that would look o- in ordinances. It's easy to say, but you have to be specific when you're writing your ordinances. So it's clear, you clearly convey, uh, what you expect from a developer. Of commercial or, uh, uh, residential subdivision.
Y'all, that would depend on, like I say, that'd depend on what section of the county, you know, you know, it would vary. So you have to, look at that, cut to some areas.
And we'll have to see what that, that looks like.
Yeah, well, I mean, uh, yeah, cause we've got different topography in Edgewood County, so it would make sense. That it would, what it ends up looking like is varied throughout the county. But we still need something in place to protect the natural topography of the area and preserve the trees. No matter where in the county it is.
Right. So that's what I have on that. We will, we're gonna dig a little bit deeper and get some definite samples. But we're gonna see what that looks like, translate that into what ordinances would re- how they would read. And, um, then we'll present, present it to you if y'all are, um, that is a way we can do it. We don't have to do it that way, but that is a way to preserve the natural landscaping of, of the county. And we'll just get some more information and it may be more than we want to bite off at one time. You know, we may wanna, let's, let's do this, let's do the tree preservation. And then if we wanna get to, um, tier grading or no mass grading, we can, we can, we can go there. I did while I had, um, in our ordinances, detention ponds. Are required to have a four foot fence. We don't care, it's for safety purposes, we want a four foot fence and that's as far as it goes. I was going to throw this out there and see how you feel. Sometimes subdivision or com- or commercial properties. When they're in their developmental stages, we say, put the detention pond in the back and put the fence around it. Where it's not along a highway corridor, so we can, can't see them. They're not very attractive. Especially if they're utilized as a detention pond and not a retention and it's used. Along with the required fencing, uh, I would suggest a, um. Some kind of vegetative buffer around the fence. That way, if it's, oh, has to be placed along a highway, uh, a corridor or road corridor where it's seen. Instead of just driving by the neighborhood or the commercial property and seeing this, the, just fencing around a hole. It would need to be screened by some kind of vegetative buffer or landscaping. And we can discuss what that looks like. If y'all have any, if y'all are for that, against that, but along the roadways. I think that would make things more attractive and, and look more. Achieve that more rural look instead of driving by and seeing a hole in the ground with fencing around it.
Yeah, I agree with that. Cause that is, in, um, is it Heritage up on twenty-five next to Williams? Cause they put their pond right there at highway twenty-five.
Yeah, and, and, and they agreed to put it in the back, cause I think you guys asked at one point. And then so did, and county council agreed to take, the original plan, it was up front. And they said, okay, well, we agreed to move it to the back. And well, it came to, for whatever reason.
It's because, um, the neighbors didn't want commercial. So they had to change their plan.
So the retention.
So the pond ended up on highway twenty-five instead of a gas station.
Yep, the detention pond's there and it's, you see when you pass by, it's, it's just the fence there. Because that's, they've met the requirements. They fenced it. Cause they could not, um, according to the engineer and DHEC or whatever, they couldn't, they couldn't properly gather the storm water. In the back, they needed it in the front because of the topography of the land. So in that case, if you have to move it, I mean, you guys can always request, say, hey, if you're gonna do it. You know, we're always gonna request you to move it to the back of the property and it be fenced. But if it's along, has to be along a highway corridor, we need to, to screen or do some kind of vegetative buffer around it.
Like a snake pond out there. You know, you know, it's, they, well, you'll have to look at that clothing, make sure you design it well. Cause they really don't look bad if you design them right. Like I said, a lot of time, you got, you got to get the wa- water go to where water gotta go.
Yep, they are, they are necessary. But that's all I have. Y'all have anything else y'all wanna? So are y'all interested in the buffering of the re- detention ponds?
Yes.
The bit along the fencing, just to give some kinda screening along the road corridor? Okay, so we'll write that up and let y'all see what that looks like. And these, the subdivision things, they'll, it'll go along with the subdivision, uh, ordinances. It'll just be, uh, part of their requirement, no matter where you put the subdivision. It won't just be in the overlay. Was, was the suggestion and how it'll read.
And that'll be written up for major subdivisions and PDs?
We can add it to the PD and we can add it for ma- yeah, add it for major subdivisions, just no matter where, not just zoned areas.
Yeah, I think we need to add it to PDs, so it's consistent.
We can add it to a, as a PD requirement.
Yeah.
Entryway landscaping, mm-hmm.
And, I mean, is that'll, is, are we gonna do the, uh, tree preservation and grading for PDs too? It needs to be consistent, no ma- I mean.
See, that's, that's the area where you get into a PD is completely designed to come up with their ho- whole own set of ordinances. So we need to, um. We can see what that looks like, uh. As far as the tree preservation and the entryway. Most of them, PDs, they do their landscape, it's just a given. They're gonna, if they're gonna do a PD, they're gonna design the neighborhood to, to have a nice landscaped entryway. But, um, the more restrictions you put on that PD, the more it gets away from being a PD. So we can see what that is. I'll talk it, uh, I'll talk to Doc about it.
Yeah, I think it should be able to be put in PDs. Because we're talking about preservation of our natural topography and our natural species of trees and shrubs. You know, and not having mass grading where they go down, go in there and mow down everything to put their plan in.
Right.
So if the whole purpose of it is for us to even be looking at this ordinance, it needs to apply to the PDs as well as major subdivisions. Uh, it needs to be consistent.
Okay. All right, that's all I, I have my notes. Do y'all have anything else y'all want to? Add, what y'all, anything else that y'all wanna? Throw my way to, um, and we'll also, oh, look at open storage. Uh, a, a, a permanent screening around o- certain open storage, commercial open storage. And I'll write something up and see what, show you what that looks like. That way, anything that has any, uh, use considered open storage. They would have some type of screening or buffering to kinda, where you, when you pass it, you don't just see a bunch of. Vehicles or trucks or equipment parked out in an open space that's, I mean, we understand that you have open storage as part of your business. But along hu- uh, highway corridors and things like that, we want to make sure they're well screened.
Speaking of that, is there anything that can be done about the shipping containers on highway twenty-five?
That is something that is grandfathered in and, uh, unfor- you know, we can't go back. Law's not retroactive. We can't go back and, and, and force them to adhere to ordinances that didn't, you know, they had that there. That was an acceptable use at the time that they put it there. Um, from what I understand, the person, his intent was to make them look like they were, um. Like a ship lap around them and they were gonna rent, be rental spaces.
Said that when the guy gets finished, I mean, Doc's already talked about that, is, you know, it's taken him a long time. But once they're done, they're gonna look good, but he's running through some areas where he couldn't do things and. But Doc said, he's gonna get a move on it, so.
When he talked to me, it's been about a year or so ago.
It's been more than a year.
No, he talked to us about it a year, about seven months ago.
Well, that's close to a year.
Yeah, and he, um, from what he said, it's gonna look a hu- a whole lot better. It's gonna look more like, have like ship lap on it. But I think what she said is, he's having issues with leveling, you know, and getting, getting everything where he can level things out. Where it looks good and then he's going to do some kind of veneer around them where they look like buildings, little mini.
Actually made progress in the past month. If you look, there are some that have moved up to the top tier where he had been leveling out, so.
I kinda seen that. And I'm sure they're not easy to move. But, you know, hopefully, rather su- sooner rather than later, that will be accomplished and it will look a lot nicer. And he can use it as, uh, mini storage units for people and rent those out and they'll look good.
He said, Doc said when he's finished with it, he said, we're really gonna be impressed with it, so.
Yeah, from what he told me, it's, it's gonna look good. We'll see. Anything else? It's all you, sir.
Had sleep over all of this. Well, there's nothing else we, the both of them are done.
So moved.
Oh, we're done.